There you guys. Denny David.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Here.
Max Sorbrook.
Present.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda commissioners? Item two, public comments. We have public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Come on up, sir.
Morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you? I just thought I'd take this opportunity to introduce myself to the board formally. I've seen you all out and about at different places and townships I've been to, but again, my name is Troy Daniel. I'm a new district court judge and just wanted to introduce myself to you. Over the 25 years I've been practicing law, I've been dealing with people who need help with serious problems when they're most difficult times of their life. I've had represented people who are facing losing their parental rights, people facing spending the rest of their, spending the rest of their life in prison, people who were caught up in mental health and substance abuse issues, and people who cannot afford to buy groceries that are facing debts for money they can't afford to pay. As judge, it's my job to treat each individual with fairness and compassion. Sometimes that means punishment and sometimes that means treatment and sometimes that means addressing the issues that brought them before the court in the first place. As judge, again, it's my job to teach each individual fairness and compassion. My 25 years experience makes me the right person. To be your judge, I represent a lot of people who are guilty and some who are not guilty and some who shouldn't have been brought to court within the first place. I love living up north of Michigan. I love this area and I hope you'll give me an opportunity to continue doing that, representing you as your district court judge. I do have a website called TroyDaniel.com. I have a bio on there and if anybody wants more information, contact me through there or contacting my offices. When I first moved up here in 1997, my folks back home used to ask me when I'm moving back home and I used to tell them, I'm not moving back home. This is my home, northern Michigan, and I love it up here. I've been trained as a mediator, volunteer mediator for over 10 years, representing people, helping solve problems such as family disputes that were providing property of those fair to everyone concerned. So, my experience representing the working people of Roscommon County and Odoma Counties for the last 26 years makes me the right person to be your judge and people's judge, as I would say. So again, I appreciate this time discussing addressing the board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, A appointments. Ray Blamer related to transit director related to annual tire purchase. Come on up, Mr. Blamer. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good. Living the dream as always. Um, this is what I sent to Jim. It's just the price from, it's Malaris Tire Man and it's, it's where we always buy our tires. We buy on the school purchase program. So it's, it's the same price wherever we would buy them. It's just that they have the volume and they can also take our used tires back. They'll deliver the tires and they'll take the used ones back.
Did I miss that on here? I didn't see it on here.
I don't recall seeing it myself.
Yeah, I sent you an email on it.
When was that?
Um, it's right here.
Are we, are, so we're looking at, is this prior to going into winter? Is this an annual?
It's what we do is we buy tires every year.
This time of year?
Yes. At, at the end of the year, depending on our budget, we'll buy so many. Now we're just buying, it'll be seventy-seven hundred dollars and I have eighty-five hundred dollars in my budget for tires.
How many tires does that purchase?
Um, it will be, how many was it? Sixty. And we will be full of tires. Um, they, they did go up twenty dollars apiece this year and the scrap went up fifty cents.
Do they take the other tires back? No.
Yeah, yeah, they take them back, but at a fee. It's, I put it out there. How much was it this year for scrap tires? The two fifty?
Went up by, went up fifty cents. It doesn't say how much.
I think it's two fifty.
Commissioner Scott.
Do they bring the whole supply to you?
Oh, yeah.
Or they won't bring them in?
No, we got, we got store. We've got a spot for them and.
All right.
Yep. You guys want to read this or?
He just said everything that's in there, but there was an attachment to it. So I'll go back into my.
This is, this was the attachment right here.
And it's got like the pricing on it.
Yeah, well, it's just, you want, want me to make copies and bring it back?
Sure, please.
Yeah, I, I don't remember seeing that. I'm not saying it's not there, but I don't remember that.
I sent it to you right after we discussed it. Remember I called you and I.
Might be why it's, oh yeah, we talked about that and moved out.
Little bit.
Check it out.
When do you want this by, Ray?
Um, well, we have to buy them by the end of the year and haven't paid for it by the end of the year, I believe, or close to the end.
By the end of September.
Yes.
But.
The fiscal year.
Fiscal year, yeah.
Okay.
Come on this year's budget.
Right. Yeah, we don't necessarily need the tires right now, but we need to take possession of them and be billed before they, before the end of the fiscal year, which is September thirtieth, so.
And they're out of Saginaw.
Yeah.
Question, Miss Commissioners?
Annual things.
Yep. Alrighty.
Anything else, Blamer?
Nope, I'm good.
How many drivers are you guys down right now?
At least five.
Really?
You know, it's hard to tell because I've got a, I've got one person hired that's not a driver, that is just a dispatcher, um, part-time and everything I'm hiring is part-time. They're hard to find. I had, I got one, one gentleman hired. I have three more lined up to hire and of those three, two dropped before they ever, ever came to the facility. So I've got one more right now that I'm training with this new training situation. So, not sure how long that'll be, but I'm gonna need, I could probably use three more drivers without a problem. And some of those, one of those, or maybe two, could be dispatch drivers if, if they care to dispatch, but to dispatch, you need to know the county. And that, gentleman that I've got, I'm hiring another guy that's just gonna be a dispatcher only. He knows the county very well and hopefully he will work out. Because if you don't know the county, you, you can't dispatch a bus when you don't know where they're going, where they're, where they're picking up or even where they're at. You know, you can look on the map and it'll show where they're at, but, but if you don't know the area, it's not gonna do you any good, so.
Are you advertising currently?
No. I, I quit advertising in, indeed, about three weeks ago, I believe, and I picked these drivers, one from Indeed and all the rest were people that came in and physically made out a, a, um, application. And I, and I, in my opinion, people that come into the facility and wanna, and wanna fill out an application are likely, want, they want the job, but as it turned out, they didn't. One guy actually found a better job, a full-time job. So I may go back to Indeed again. I, I'm not sure. With Indeed, it's happened, I, I've advertised with them twice. The people that I get, I'll call them and they'll set up a package. They either won't show or call and cancel, or they just won't return a call. So I, I don't know why they're, they're on Indeed, but yet maybe they're looking for a specific job. You know, I, I don't know about that, but they just won't return the calls.
So we're not, we're not advertising any place, county website, paper?
I think it's on the county website. We're advertising on our buses every day.
In the only part-time? You don't have any?
No, full-time.
All your full-time positions are full?
Yeah. And budget-wise.
Consider that.
Budget, budget-wise, for every full-timer I hire, I'm gonna have to have some part-timers to, to make up for the, the, um, the time off and stuff that they get. You know what I mean? That, when somebody is not at the transit, I need to replace them with someone. I just can't, just don't let them go home and, you know, someone's gotta be in the bus, so I don't know. It's.
Is there any way we can help you?
I, I don't know. I don't think so. You know, if, if people won't work, they won't work.
Agreed. How?
And the, and the situation, what they have to do now, it gets timely to get a CDL with a P endorsement. The only thing I can do, um, I do have one, it's a bus coming, but it's not a bus. It's, it's a Ford van. You don't have to have a CDL to drive it and every bus that we order from now on will be ordered. It doesn't make any sense, but if it's fifteen, if it transports fifteen or more people, including the driver, you've got to have a CDL. If it's fourteen or less, you don't.
I thought it was.
Same bus, same bus, same everything.
So it's a CDL, not a chauffeur, not a chauffeur's license?
No, it's a CDL. And with the federal government and CDLs, they, they have quite a criteria to get and driving a bus, in my opinion, is not like driving a semi. It, it's, I, I don't know how to explain that, but a semi takes up a lot more room. You, you can basically gotta use your mirrors only. Where with the bus, you can turn around and you can look. The bus is smaller. It's like driving a small Class C motorhome.
Right. I, I agree. I definitely think though that like Indeed is no cost. We have a website. We have, uh, the county does.
Yeah, I think it's on there. I think so. Yeah.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yeah, it's there, but nobody ever calls.
Still at least there and maybe going into winter, people get laid off and maybe they're look, gonna be looking for some part-time stuff?
And, and that's, and that's the other thing is that, you know, the, the, the time invested into getting them trained and stuff for them to go get this P endorsement and then they just, uh, you know, they don't like it or something else comes along and they're gone.
That can happen. We still gotta try, get help.
So you need to find somebody that truly wants this type of job. This one gentleman I have now, I, I think he will make a good transit driver. He, he just got the mentality for it.
Is there any way to modify your current buses?
No, no, I, I looked into that with Oakstra and once that bus is ordered and built, that's the way it is. And basically, of our buses now, except for a couple of the older ones, all have a two-wheelchair placement. So we can haul two wheelchairs at a time. And we have flip-down seats when we're not using the wheelchairs. If we would have just not ordered the flip-down seats, we would have qualified for it. It's, you know, it's a shame and it's partially my fault, but no one knew what was gonna happen before COVID. We, we had a lot of people to pick from to be drivers and now we have none. Just none. They're just gone. I don't know where they've gone, but.
Well, it's affecting everybody.
I know. I know.
Anything else? Anything else for Mr. Blamer? Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Let us know if we can help you.
Yeah.
Mr. Beeter, come on up. Planning and zoning administrator related to one with zoning, zoning mapping amendments. How are you, sir?
Good. Good. So I did provide some information in your packet on the map amendment that was tenured to be passed by the planning commission. Now it's on to you folks for your approval. It's parcel Mills Township currently zoned as business. Property owner is not getting any traction selling this as a business parcel, actually has a buyer that is interested in it from a residential standpoint. So she came to the board and, and spoke with Mills Township. Mills Township was, was okay with the proposal. They actually approved it at their end and then it comes with planning commission. Planning commission didn't look at it as well, too. And it put quite a bit of information in that packet for you. One of the pieces I put in there is from the Michigan Association of Planning. This is becoming more and more common. A lot of areas, business zones are now, retail storefronts are disappearing because of either, either the market or Amazon and everybody being able to order everything online. People just aren't visiting the stores like they used to. So this individual would like to be able to sell this parcel. It could be turned into some residential housing as well and it is adjacent to, to the agricultural world preservation district to the south. And it's kinda on that far end, on the east end of Greenwood Road where there's not really a whole lot of business. That whole quarter along Greenwood Road, the majority of it is zoned as business. And if you've been up and down there, there are a lot in that area. So it is something, it's a trend. Maybe at the time when that was zoned that way, that was what the future kinda looked like we were going towards. I think that trend is kind of reverting back towards residential. So, one of the things that we'd like to do and will be doing this with the townships is reviewing their, reviewing their zoning and their townships to see if there are areas that were, were, maybe we thought 10 years ago, we're, we're gonna be better suited for business and maybe better for residential now or even vice versa, so.
If it goes from business to agricultural, can it go, can it revert back from agricultural to business at any point in time?
So yes, we, this originally came to us as a conditional rezoning, which means the applicant can put conditions on it. We have done those in the past where if that particular use ceases to exist, it'll revert back to its original zoning. In this particular case, the planning commission, and I know Scott Bell had brought up this issue that he didn't think this was a good idea for this parcel. So in the future, if this parcel did wanna go back to business, the applicant or the owner would have to come back and from the planning commission petition, petition us again to re, to turn it back to business, so.
And there was some concern as well. I read through your minutes about it being turned into a marijuana facility and there's a church. So there's no way that that would be possible, there's a church.
Yeah, that's gonna limit some of the uses that are allowed there. I think within that Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency, I think there's a distant standard in there, how close it can be to a church or a school. Also, I don't think that could ever be a business that sells alcohol. I believe the liquor control commission would not allow it to be within X number of feet of that as well, too.
How many feet is it?
Um, it, well, I would probably estimate it is from the corner of the property. It's maybe 200 feet, 300 feet.
That church?
Yeah. I believe that's the church there in between, maybe, might be a little bit further.
So that's quite a.
Might be a little bit further. I think the concern with the marijuana portion of it is this owner actually, I believe, has a facility in another, in another county and I think she did approach Mills Township about them creating an ordinance to allow marijuana, which they have, I don't think they have any interest in it at this time. Now that could change in the future, but at this particular time, they're, they're, they're not interested, so.
She's still on it. I mean, she's gonna sell the property.
She's gonna sell the property and so. So she, she is looking to get out of any interest in that property. And according to her, she does have a buyer lined up for residential use of the property, so.
It looks like there's been some movement there. There's been quite a few businesses in that, in that area.
There has.
I think an ice cream shop.
Yeah, there's been, I think there was a, um, like an eBay store there at one point in time as well, too. It, it's just that, that end of town and the population there just doesn't really, and it could be the type of businesses going in there as well, too. It just doesn't support, you know, retail storefront there.
You see any, any negativity do or consequences to this, this rezoning, this from business to agricultural?
The only consequence I have is we, we really should also be looking at that whole entire Greenwood quarter. Like I said, if you look back to the west, there, there are lots of homes on the north and the south side of that, you know. So I think it's a decision that the township needs to look at and what their vision for the future is. That does pose some problems for those properties as well, too. Now those residential parcels and homes in there are grandfathered into the ordinance. However, being zoned as business could limit their expansion, could limit some of these vacant parcels in here from having homes built on them, because residential is not a permitted or special use in the business districts. So, right now, like on this neighboring parcel that's zoned as business, it's a vacant parcel. Somebody wanted to build a home there, we, we couldn't allow it because.
Where?
On either side.
Either side of this parcel we're talking about, which is there's fields on each, both sides. Okay.
So residential is not a permitted or special use in the B3 or any of the business districts. So if someone wanted to build a home here right now, we, we couldn't allow it.
With it being business, but if we change it to agricultural, then.
It was changed agricultural or R1 or R2, then those residential uses would come back, but it would severely limit any business uses as well, too. So it, it's a conversation that needs to be had.
No, it wouldn't change. I'm sorry.
Not only with the planning commission, but with the township as well, too.
It wouldn't change any of those buildings there that are on the corner of Greenwood, uh, like next to St. Vincent's. That wouldn't do anything there, because there's been some upgrades. There's been some purchases of those buildings and doing some really good things.
Yeah, we actually just approved last night at that meeting, Shane Gamas is putting in a
recycling.
Cycling.
It looks really good.
It's a recycling facility. I was actually quite impressed with the technology that he's actually using there for that. The way that they, they capture those fluids in those vehicles, the way that the inventory, the way that they do those things, it's actually a, it's gonna be a pretty neat facility when it's done.
So the only thing that this, this impacts are these two properties, which is just farmland around there right now.
And actually, this zoning is just for this particular parcel. These two would remain business. I've actually had this parcel owner was part of our notice process of this, actually contacted me and said, you know what? This might be better used for my property as well as residential. I might be able to sell it.
Okay.
So it is, once again, it is a conversation in this whole area. There is a business here. There's a Newman Park, I believe, is back over.
Yeah, I was thinking of the church down the road. There is a church directly across these three. That's a Catholic church.
Yeah, so that ended town and along that corridor, we really do need to take a better look at it, so.
Do you guys have any question? Mr. Scott, anything to add to it? You're on the.
I'm on the planning board. I, I voted no because it is a commercial area. As Ryan said, we need to get with the townships. If they wanna be an active part in zoning or not, uh, they, we ask, we normally ask applicants for zoning changes. They go to their township board. The township board has no, no authority or anything. They usually just come out looking like the hero because they'll back whoever asks. So the planning commission turns them down, the township looks like they're their friend. If, if zoning board approves it, looks like township's their friend. Uh, they have no, no responsibility and no authority in the matters. I just, so not even send the applicants to the townships. If townships don't wanna do their own zoning, then they just have to live with what the zoning, the county's planning commission gives them.
So your reasoning for turning it down is because it's currently business?
See, it, it's a big thing.
I wanna make sure I understand.
We, we as a planning commission have to provide areas for every kind of zoning there is, okay? And if we're gonna divide up the county into townships as we do, then every township has to have certain areas. They have to have an industrial area. They have to have business areas. They have to have residential areas. So, once you set these, then you gotta stick with it. I, you gotta stick with it. We, this is a spot zone. This is a residential spot zone and which is circled, except for the south side, which is just wilderness with no road access, but everything else there is commercial. I think we're going down a slippery slope by doing this. You do this there, the next thing you know, you're doing it in an industrial park. That's basically what that end of the, that end of Greenwood Road is, is an industrial area or a commercial slash industrial area. We just approved this right around the corner. That's industrial and we just approved it. There's businesses all along there, but, you know, it's lots of excavating is there, the Chamber of Commerce building, the churches there, you know, there's all kinds of business there. It's just a principle with me is that this was set aside for, this area was set aside for commercial. I think you get in a slippery slope and start pulling, pulling that out, say like, not so much the city or Ed, or West Branch Township, because they do their own zoning. Okay, so the industrial parks that surround the city here won't be affected unless those municipalities do it. But like Rose City, the county, the county does all the zoning for Rose City. So somebody comes along and says, well, I can't sell my building in the industrial park. I'm next to the forge up there and I can't sell my building, but I got a guy that wants to put apartments in. And I could sell it to him and he'll put apartments in there. You wanna turn the zoning around? Now all of a sudden it's industrial slash commercial slash residential. And he's gonna scream, hey, you had a commercial spot over there in Mills Township. You, you changed it.
How long has this been, um, business? This, this specific?
This actual map is, is actually from a GIS, which I think that GIS actually goes back to, Randy's not here, but I think that's probably 2006, 2007. I imagine it's probably been zoned as business for much longer than that.
This parcel's never been anything else other than business?
Um, I, I would have to go back and dig through a lot of maps and see. I think for the most part, this whole Greenwood quarter has been probably zoned as business for extremely long time. If not, since we've been doing zone, so. In, in the sense, this is not a, this is not a spot zone because we're not throwing a district in the, you know, a totally different district in the middle of a district, even though it does look as if we are separating these. By turning this into ag, it does look like we're separating the business district out of here. It is adjacent to this agricultural district, so it doesn't meet the definition of a spot zone. Things change and, and I do agree with Craig, um, to an extent, um, when these go to the township, we're asking for a recommendation. I think a lot of time the township believes they're the ones making the decision. Unfortunately, sometimes what they're making the basis for their, their decision doesn't meet the standards that we need to meet at the planning commission, so. And to be honest with you, um, you, you folks see it all the time. You get the public in here and it's, um, sometimes it's hard to disagree with the public. But sometimes you, you have to do what's best for, for everyone involved. So, um, this, this area here, in my opinion, I, I just don't ever see this developing at this course, at this point in time into a business district. I think we are hindering the development of these parcels by not turning them into agriculture or into a residential zone. And there are a lot, the argument could be said, though, we, we do have a ton of homes in this district as well, too, who will be limited on what they can and cannot do because of the zoning. Things change, times change, uses change, areas change over time. It's, it's a matter of, do we get stuck in our old ways or do we help try to change it and promote some growth in this area, too? So, these are, they're zoned as business parcels and we're, we're not seeing, and I, the township, I would imagine, would agree, we're, we're not seeing the Walmarts, the, the Walgreens, the Rite Aids. Those, those people aren't buying these parcels in the building.
But that landowner there did reach out to you and, and verbalize that possibly selling some of that property for residential.
Correct, correct.
Commissioner, so do you have anything, questions, opinion? How about you give me your opinion?
If it, if it's gonna, if, if it's gonna be sold, it lies in the manner in which we think it's gonna be for housing, I'm all for it, because God knows we need housing in this county.
Commissioner Becker.
I agree.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, I'm that way. We, we definitely need the housing. Um, I, I see Craig's point of view. Um, it's already been to planning and they've already approved it. Is that what you said, Ryan?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So the township approved it?
Township approved it and planning approved it. Yeah. That's why they're in that.
Craig was the only naysayer.
It is a nice building. When it's, when, I mean, it, it, let me rephrase that. It could be a very nice.
Sure.
Facility. It's, it's got nice parking. Location's nice. I, it is a very nice building. It just needs some.
I don't think there's been any new.
I don't think there's been any new business development in that section of Greenwood Road, probably.
Well, that, that, that right around the corner.
Well, the old Prescott products, right. I said that section of Greenwood from Henderson Lake.
You know, I mean, we just approved Bee Peru up in Rose City and he's already said that he wants to put in places every twenty miles. And, and then Dollar General has been asking for spots that people never thought they would ask for.
There's already a Dollar General.
Up in Saint Helen, they have three, three of those type of stores right now and they're building number four at the very north end of town, which I worked in Saint Helen for six years and they would tell you nothing north of the light should go in, but yet that's going right now. They're building another one right now.
Isn't, uh, Saint Helen, Horse Sports bought out now and they're gonna be planning?
There's just a, there's just something working in the works, I don't.
Okay, so do you need this on for a resolution?
Yes.
Can you do that for us? Anything else, Ryan?
Um, no, not on that.
Uh, item two, telecommunications tower site plan review fee.
Yeah, and thi- this deals more with the, um, special use, so our meeting, we did have a meeting last night for a cell tower, fancy telecommunications towers, fancy word for it. We have some federal and some state laws that limit what we can and cannot do and what we can and cannot in our decision-making process. One of those things that limit us is what we can charge for a special use permit. We are capped at a thousand dollars for that. Right now, our special use permit fee for all special uses is four hundred dollars. Our site plan review fee is three hundred dollars. Those are the fees that are, are charged. Meyer, for instance, those, those are the fees that were charged to Meyer as well, too. Unfortunately, and I shouldn't say unfortunately, the ordinance actually requires an engineering review done by a, um, outside source. Um, currently, we use LAPMS for that. The cost of that report is a thousand dollars. So when we start looking at the costs of the review for telecommunications, the public hearing, the report is a thousand dollars. We know, obviously, we have per diem for those members as well, too. We're at two hundred and eighty dollars. They get reimbursed for their mileage. I put a nominal number here of two hundred, two hundred miles for all those members. At sixty-two cents a mile, that's a hundred and twenty-four dollars. We have the cost of copies. For telecommunications towers, a lot of those copies, because we're looking at maps and we're looking at propagation maps. Those are color items, so those have to be printed in color, which are a little bit more expensive than just a black or white. Not to mention the amount of copies, the reports, the information for that. I actually just put a nominal number of fifty dollars on here. We have postage for all the notices that I have to send out for that. That's about fifty dollars. A notice in the paper that we are required to add for that, we're at seventy dollars. All those costs combined are, we're at about fifteen hundred and seventy-four dollars. Then, of course, that doesn't include my time for review and the time that I have on it as well, too. Now, I understand I am budgeted in the department, however, that is, that is time. A rough estimate on this one, I would say I have a minimum of twenty hours into that. So you're looking at close to another five hundred dollars. So our actual costs for this review are, I would say in excess of two thousand dollars. We are only recouping seven hundred dollars. We did discuss it briefly with the planning commission last night. And it is not uncommon for communities, uh, cities, townships that do their own zoning to have different fees for different uses. We are capped at a thousand dollars. I did speak with, um, the county's attorney, Tim Perone, on this. One of the questions that I had was, can we pass the cost of this report onto the applicant? The way that the law is written, we can charge a thousand dollars or our actual cost, whatever or less. So this is not something we can pass on to the applicant. That is either something we have to cover with our fees or eat the rest of it, so. I don't think planning commission was, was against maybe raising the special use fee for telecommunications towers, um, to a thousand dollars. We could also raise, there is no statutory language for the site plan review. So we could also raise that to a thousand dollars as well, too. It would help to offset our costs that are incurred with this. Generally speaking, my experience with telecommunications towers, they kind of go in bunches. The, the companies will build out every few years. So usually when I see one, I'll see two or I'll see three. I have, I have heard rumors of another tower that may be coming up over the county as well, too. So we kind of thought it was prudent to kind of address this sooner than later.
What, where is this at?
This.
The specific one?
This specific one is in Mills Township. It is between, on South, on East Lake Road. Hill Township, excuse me. Hill Township, between North and South East Lake, so.
So why would we not ask for the maximum? I mean, you just, you just went through as far as your costs.
Right. To me, to me, it's a no-brainer. Um, obviously, I, I don't make that decision.
He's asking us to, to approve.
Currently is seven fifty, right?
Currently, the total cost for special use is four hundred. Statutory, the loss is we can only charge a thousand. Uh, there is no cap on the site plan review, uh, which is an additional three hundred dollars, so we're at seven. Just in comparison, our zoning fee reviews, you know, for this is seven hundred dollars. I, I won't even tell you what the building permit fees were for Meyer. They're probably in excess of thirty thousand dollars, so. From my standpoint, I'd argue that's maybe the placement of something and it could be more important than how it gets built, but because we do want to make sure we're putting, put things in spots where, um, they're supposed to be. Same thing with this map amendment, land use, we, we don't want to put uses that might cause problems next to each other or slap a nuclear power plant in the middle of a residential facility. But tho- those are just some examples, so. But the costs do, the, the costs are exceeding what we're charging for, especially for telecommunications towers. Currently, right now, I don't believe there's any other laws out there that cap us for any additional type of uses, so. And, and these are large telecommunications companies. Those laws were put into effect because they were getting gouged in some communities. It wasn't uncommon for some of them to, in the Detroit area, to, to get before this law went into effect, to get a seventy-five thousand dollar. The cost of the permit was seventy-five thousand dollars. So I do understand the reasoning for the, for the laws of the power of the center. We do have to protect our budget.
No brainer. Questions, Commissioner Throck?
I agree.
Commissioner Scott?
We should go in the back.
Commissioner Van, okay, you'll put that under resolution. Anything else, Mr. Peter?
I think that's it today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four discussion items. We got four, a security screening.
So you have, um, documents you may have already seen.
Do you have anything to add to this?
The only thing I'll say is this morning, I pulled an, piled in the one spreadsheet that I uploaded. Oh, I think this was Ron's suggestion for today for the whole. I really don't have much to add to it. The grant didn't go up on the updated goals, but the price machine stayed the same. The one machine, the, the top row, that group is, um, models that were used at the Super Bowl, this company. So they were only used for a short amount of time, so they're slightly discounted. They have the same warranty. Middle one is the same machine, a brand new one, and the bottom one, the Smith's detection is actually the manufacturer machine that we have now.
Tim?
I'm pretty well covered it. Um, one of the points, though, that, um, is made and maybe it's not in this particular email chain. We were waiting on Mike Bowers to see if there was some federal money that was available to this. Uh, I have to agree with the assessment Tom made. Um, we waited plenty long. If there is money at the federal level that we could use to offset this, then we could deal with that when the money's available, but to wait any longer. Uh, I, I don't know what kind of rush we're in, but I do know the machine that we have isn't necessarily the most reliable. For instance, they can't turn it off because if they turn it off, it might not come back on. That's kind of a significant flaw. So if we're gonna do this, this might be the time, particularly with the machines that are available at this discounted price, this might be the time to act.
Commissioners, Commissioner Von.
Well, it just seems like we've been kind of kicking this can down the road for quite a while and, and I believe it needs to be done. And for the security of this building and for our people, it, it needs to be taken care of.
Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Sorok.
Well, I think we definitely need to get a machine. I'm just. My initial thought was the, the wrap scan for the Super Bowl, but now I'm looking at Smith's detection on the timed into spreadsheet and the actual bio mine cost after four years with service contract is
Cheaper.
Six thousand dollars less, so.
Commissioner Scott.
Yeah, um. I know that the Smith detection machine here is the same brand name we got now. But we, we got a used machine and that's what happened, so I don't think that every Smith that comes out is gonna be same way. I like that recommendation with the Smith model. I think it'll do what we need it to do. And yes, we've been kicking this can down the road.
After six months.
I'd sure hate to have an issue with it and, and then be able have to look back and say, well, we did bring it up, we did talk about it. And we kicked that can so many times. We got, we got our money. It'll pay for this. If, if a grant comes along, fine.
So you're in favor?
But if a grant doesn't come along, then we're gonna take it out of the general fund the next time we talk about this.
So you're in favor of the four-year, thirty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars? That's the last.
Yes.
Uh, you as well, Commissioner Von.
Um, uh, didn't have a chance yesterday to look through all these figures, but, um, like I say, I'm in the same mind frame as Commissioner Scott that, uh, again, we need to, uh, get something in place.
Commissioner Sorok.
Oh, I agree.
Looking at that Smith detection as well?
Yes.
Uh, Tom, do you know much about this detection? You're okay with this?
I don't know much about this. I can't really say.
There's just a pretty significant, I mean, price difference from that rapper scan new model, forty-two thousand fifteen dollars for a four-year and this Smith detection new model for thirty-two thousand nine hundred. I mean, there's a ten thousand dollar difference. There's gotta be something there that.
The service contract with the cost differences, just look at the machine cost itself. Actually, the wrap scans is the cheapest outright by, but the service contracts are what adds to the cost.
Which.
Bottom line.
Do they come in, I, I guess, is there a difference between the service? I didn't look them over that closely. I, I thank you for the documents. I booked them over. But as far as a service contract, I mean, we need to really look then with that price difference to see if there's a service call, to see if there's a difference in how often they come and service it. There's gotta be with that ten thousand dollar difference, there has to be, obviously, some significant differences, I would think. Do you know?
I do know that the RAB scan, they come in with their annual maintenance on it. It's just, it's like service with PMI, that's a that's where they come up with the radiation survey and everything, a lot of once a year. I don't know about the RAB scan.
So can we find out the, and, and get a better breakdown as far as eh, what that service contract looks like for each one of these?
For apples to apples.
Yeah, because there's gotta be something, i- if they're not covering the service, the annual service, how much is that? I mean, I think we need a better breakdown of that before we make a, a educated, wise decision.
Agreed.
Because for them to come look at that one, now you told us, it was just for them to drive here was
A lot of money.
A lot of money.
The exact figures, I may have that service contract, I didn't vote, I can't say that. Remember, I tried to get apples to apples, information to buy the, their ball, eight-five, next business day, and not twenty-four, so I've I didn't think we needed, we're not an airport.
I think we need to ask for a better breakdown of that service contract. That's a, that's a pretty significant difference, so there's gotta be some service difference there. So can we continue to? Can you email us that or that? You guys agree? Anything else on that? Item four B, body cameras. Want to come on out, Sheriff or Mr. Peter? Better, better. I almost did it. I almost did it. I know.
Peter better.
Smile out of ya.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, I just wanna, I just think it's time to open up discussions on body cams, uh, for the wave of the, the world nowadays. I, 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 I don't think we can afford not to have them really for liabilities and, and things, gestures that, uh, the public may say that my officers did and didn't do or my officers did something shouldn't have. I, 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 I think it's time. I realize it's a lot of money, but it could save us in the long run. You know.
A lot of money, but it covers five years, so that's, it's less than ten grand a year for guys.
Yeah, and it's fourteen, fourteen cameras and it's cloud-based and also it, it would do a good job for us and I, and, and what I understand, it's the same ones that the state police have.
That's what I was gonna ask, okay.
A lot of the major departments have, with this, along, as well as MFP.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a proven device, so. And as far as the money goes to pay for it, uh, that discussion was with the undersheriff and Tim, I believe. I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, we'd have a budget for it, that's all. That's
Okay.
The only.
Okay.
We'd have to budget for it. Obviously, this would be a purchase probably after September thirty, so we would.
I didn't get into that conversation with the undersheriff. But I know it's very, it's very crucial that we get them and, and I thought I'd never, ever say in my career that we need them. Nor did I ever want them, but I, I think it's time. Like, with, with society now, I think it's time, it's time to protect us, all of us.
How long does the state police have the body cams?
Oh, about six months, maybe.
Is that it?
Yeah, well. Oh, they've done it by area. I think our area up there just, they just got them three months ago, but they started down like a Lansing, six months ago and then they just spent.
This is a no-brainer to me, uh.
They had them on their cars. There was a report, a paper about.
They just had audio. They didn't have any, they had video, they didn't have on them, on their bodies.
No, I thought they just had the, uh.
They had, just had audio on their.
Audio, just audio on the.
Cameras in the car. Cameras were in the car and they did a transmit audio.
So they had audio on their body.
Yes, but no camera.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
And when you're talking cameras in a car, that's a whole different, uh.
Oh, Jesus.
That's, that's a lot of money there, so.
We've been down that road before. For the car in this system was a hundred, almost a hundred ninety dollars. For those two systems, so I mean, it's, this is.
This is forty-three.
This is forty-three.
Forty-four thousand dollars.
Now with that, I've reached out to other vendors as well.
Again, you're talking, you're talking five years, you're talking less than nine thousand dollars a year.
Fine with it.
I mean.
I've been.
Let's just do what.
You've been a huge advocate of this, Brad.
But this in GPS, I think, is, uh, not only just for, um, your department, but for all departments in the county, I think, is it, is it
The GPS.
To have for liability reasons. I, I think this would have been great and, uh, obviously, sometimes we don't always do everything right. But that's for you to decide what the, um, decisions are in corrective action. But, gosh, when, when we get accused of things all the time and we can prove that this didn't happen, I think that is crucial.
Did or didn't, and you can take the appropriate action right now.
Yep.
You got it, there's no question. You've got the video evidence. Were we wrong? Not wrong.
How do these body, just because I know nothing about it and I apologize and, and I, again, I'm a hundred percent favor this, so I don't, I don't foresee a reason. Is, I guess I have a couple of questions. Is this gonna be a while? So if we approve this at the next meeting, is this, is this gonna be a while before we can get all of this? The, the equipment, is this?
Turn around on it. It should be, it's very quickly. Because everything is, I mean, they have the equipment already. It's just a matter of getting, getting our program set up how we want it with, with Tom, you know, on IT part of it. Because it is all downloaded to the cloud.
So that was my next question. How does, how do these work, uh, from an IT perspective? Like, is this a recording? Is this live? Is this?
It's, it's a, well, with record live when you're.
Okay.
It's, it's like a movie camera. It's recorded live, when, when the officer gets back, drops it in, uh, the cradle for the charging and it also downloads all the information from it, um, to the cloud.
How is it stored?
In the cloud. We don't need the big. We don't need the big the big server rooms to download all this information into.
Okay.
It goes to their offsite location. That has the big server room. It goes to a server farm and then and then it goes up to the cloud.
Is it something that you have to manually download?
Automatically does it.
Automatically does.
Yep, and I make quiz it.
And with this program, that's one of the reasons why we wanted.
Redacts.
Yes, the redaction portion of that is that this program can do for foyer requests and all that is huge. It's very time saving. The other programs that we from the other vendors don't do that. So and quite honestly, the other vendors I've reached out to, I can't even get quotes from right now. I one, the second biggest one said we'll get back to you someday. We're busy. And the other ones I've just heard crickets from. So and these guys were like within thirty seconds went back to me with, yep, what do you need?
And M S P does all the research and all this. So it saves us a lot of time, a lot of money to research this stuff. So we know it's been researched real well.
It's very.
Sorry, I'm just waiting for you guys to get done. Um, like three questions. First, can this come on a road patrol? Out of our village? Cuz it's part of training. Equipment. It's, I think it's covered in there. It should be anyway. And then um can this um, is this for all of your guys? Or?
It's just for fourteen fourteen.
Fourteen of them?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we include um say the dog catcher with this as well?
Animal control.
He's working under our umbrella. Absolutely, absolutely. Because he's he's accused of things.
Exactly.
The the actual initial cost of each camera for going, it's only a couple thousand dollars per camera. So if we want to up that to get him one as well, the extra for the extra technology that goes with all that, it's really not that much more.
Fourteen.
So what if we went with twenty? So we added a couple extra.
It just, yeah, we could do that. It's just gonna bump up because there's, you know, there's fees for you know, each body camera is twenty nine hundred bucks. So.
I would definitely wanna include our.
Yeah, we definitely, yeah, he's in that fourteen.
Transport. If if you wanted, yeah.
I mean, if the if we had, if we had the equipment, we'd wanna use it.
But if we want, I mean, if we wanna start out fourteen, that would cover what we got right now. And as we hire more, get more people, we could actually, I mean, all we gotta do is just buy one at a time of the lack to upgrade or and it's not anymore.
Change your price and you just wanted to upgrade one or two.
If you want to just pick up one, it's gonna, you know, the yearly piece is gonna be a few dollars. Type of thing. Uh because the other we already know the base program is already in place. Um, you know, so it's really not that much.
How many, you said fourteen, is that cover everybody on the road in the field?
Yes.
Okay, for sure.
What is currently, what we currently have.
And this is twenty four hour recording. It can't be shut off on. It's it's.
Oh, it can be, yes. It's it's manually activated.
Okay.
It did, it depends how what the sheriff wants you to do. If you want some.
We'll put policies in.
Yeah, we've got your policy played.
You know, I mean, if you're. Yeah, it's gotta be on. If you're if you're active, if you're if you're if you're interfacing with people, that should be on. That will be part of our our SOPs.
Is it on when they're on the job or?
I mean, I I I think what Craig's asking, if if they're night patrol and they're driving down the road
No.
For six hours a night, doesn't necessarily need to be on.
Oh, so if they pull somebody over and they don't.
They hit the button.
Button, they're not recording, right?
That's that's the way all of them work.
Yeah.
They all work that way.
Oh, this is a question.
Right, I don't, you don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Actually, I mean, then I gotta do everything everybody else does.
With with this program, I will tell you this. It interfaces with the in-car camera stuff. So if at some point we down the road, we wanna go to that system as well. When the lights get turned on the car, that camera comes on the car. It also auto it activates
Turn that on too.
Body cam as well. That's all, but.
Until that point, you could put it in your policy that if you are caught not turning your camera on, you can be reprimanded for that.
That's that is. And and trust me, I would want it on.
I'd like to see that.
It's gotta be.
You don't want every personal conversation that may may have during their shift um recorded. Their people too.
Cuz there was, there was some departments and I'm not gonna name them, but they were mandatory to have them on their whole ship. Um, they got on some lawsuits because people were leaving them on when they went to the restroom, so on and so forth. We don't need none of that, so.
It's a valid question cuz I I don't know how any of this works neither, so I I wouldn't have known that answer.
Right.
Um, I, it makes sense. I think our GPS is the next thing and that's been kicked down the can or whatever it is you said. Um, I mean.
Kick the road down the cage.
Discuss. How about we go with discuss? I I think that needs to continue to be conversated cuz I think both of these need to occur.
Dispatches.
It's coming.
Dispatches and they're in process of upgrading, so I think that'll.
Uh Commissioner Newbacker and I talked after the meeting last time with those Tahoe's that are coming, you know, in that in that resolution that that come about as far as man uh making it mandatory for GPS to go in those new two new vehicles as well. That that wasn't discussed, but it could have been, I guess.
Well, again, it's, I I'm talking all county vehicles.
Absolutely, agreed, but.
And assets.
Yep.
So this is is a great idea, though, I think.
Oh, we appreciate it. The cover, we are looking for support for this, for sure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Need to go.
Hey, I think that's a, I'll put that on for next. Thank you.
Uh, what's the subscription pay by us? This subscription per year, what does this buy us? Eighty five hundred dollars a year.
For for five years.
For five years.
Oh, each year is eighty five.
Right, 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 for five years, but we're locked in at that price for five years.
I know. What's it binding?
Eighty five, that's covers your the warranty, the five year warranty.
Already's up higher. It's included.
Yep.
Okay, so what's it binding?
Tom, can you answer that?
The subscription? And uh. I would guess that's probably the the posting, the cloud based.
Probably.
Yeah, it's for the offsite.
For their services.
They're for their services to
Five years.
Maintain that.
It doesn't say it.
It doesn't really say, no. But just that's what covers.
But I I would assume that.
That's the breakdown of the the cost per unit per year.
Okay, so then if you buy another unit, um does that subscription cost then go up? I figure out it's uh fourteen units, eighty five hundred dollars, it's four hundred and fifteen dollars a unit.
So.
Per year.
We, yeah, so if we buy six more units to make the twenty, is it six times four hundred and fifteen more for the subscription?
I would, probably, yes.
Plus three thousand a unit. Plus three thousand dollars.
Right. You have Motorola reissue that with the additional cameras, just that way we'll know.
Yeah, sure.
Won't be any question.
Yeah, no, it's, that's, this company, like I said, our sales rep for it, she's awesome. And I could, I could have that in twenty minutes. I could just call her and she'll get right back to me.
So I would, I would propose instead of the fourteen cameras, we get at least sixteen.
That's what I'm thinking. Just a couple backup.
If you say animal control needs one, so there's your fifteenth. And if you so desire to have transport um at least one of your officers on transport, have one on. There's two.
Check my people.
Yeah.
This is, is it something that corrections department in the in the uh jail will eventually go to too?
They have cameras all over.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
Oh, like he says, transport, they're off offsite.
Right, they're offsite. That's something we'll discuss. Um, I get myself the undersheriff and we'll we'll come up with something.
Well, you might as well get it all in one shot.
We have the ability to support this from an I T perspective, correct, Tom? We have the ability to support this from an I T perspective.
All got with me before and obviously we all know all our two hats is mayor of the city and is the undersheriff, but the city west branch already went to a body cam solution. And it wasn't the best role and there's been issues with the cradle and whatnot, and that's why we went to the correction.
Tell us about these cameras. Anything you can add to it?
Uh, I'm not sure where we're at.
I was explaining, she asked about the I T standpoint for the support for this and whatnot. I was explaining to her about went forward about the end of the city west branch. It wasn't the best role. You did get with me before you looked into this. And I said, cloud based solution, don't do onsite storage. City west branch said props at the cradle. We had to add storage space to the server to retain the video. It's not worth the money to go with the role that they did. It was a, it was a good thing to start fresh.
The problems that cities had have been huge as far as trying to do their own type of thing. The watch guard has the cloud based, has redaction.
This is what we're talking about right here. You're discussing. So this is the cloud versus a recording that you're talking about from the city?
Yes.
Okay.
To store internally. So we would have to buy a lot more storage, be able to do it self contained. And then we'd have to find redaction. So to be able to redact. One of the things that comes with body cameras and in car video is you have that in foyer request. And it's gonna create a whole lot more work, but on the other side, it's gonna be a lot safer for everybody involved. But having the redaction, we'll be able to do it a lot quicker, save a lot of time type of thing. So cloud base is the way to go instead of internally. You learn that through the city and.
Was there that big of a price difference of why they went that way? What was their reasoning?
Initially, they thought it was a good idea for the price. I mean, there was a lot, lot of savings initially. But then they started having problems and then they had storage issues. So.
Then you maintaining your own equipment servers.
Yeah, that, now and Tom has been.
Expensive, you know.
Who's gonna be responsible if if can uh for a foyer for any of this information? Who's gonna be responsible for for getting that?
It would come through the sheriff's office. So ultimately, the administrative assistant, the undersheriff. Tim is the foyer coordinator for the county.
Wow.
So.
So that's gonna put more on you.
Uh not not really. If um all the actions happening in the sheriff's office.
Okay.
My role then is just to send it out. Now, I'm gonna bring up a policy to you probably in the next few months to to maybe eliminate some of the bureaucracy. I did read the statute like I promised. Um, while we do have the name foyer coordinator, there is language in there that makes me think that we can also have a foyer coordinator in the sheriff's office. They can then respond to their own foyer. So I have to still keep the records and and everything for for the year and everything else that goes with it. But that'll eliminate a step, process things quicker, be more timely for the people who who are asking for the information. But that's down the road. In the meantime, I would rely completely on the sheriff's office. It's like I do right now. We had a uh request for some video from the jail and Brian took care of that. And it's for me, it was just a matter of receiving the thumb drive to send out. So it's for me, while it's a step, it's not burdensome.
You you just walked in. We are definitely all in favor of this. We were just questioning what the eighty five twenty for the uh year subscription fee. Uh Mister uh better's going to get information on that. I'm getting better. I try to be respectful.
What that gets us a year?
Yeah, like there's eighty five twenty.
Right, subscription fee.
Well, I think it's a cloud based.
It's the fourteen cameras. It's cloud based and it's the redaction. Um, some of the neat features about it too, one of the things that I like about it, you can create um QR codes. So the example I use is the fair. You create a QR code for the fair that's posted up all over the fairgrounds. If somebody sees something happen, they can record it with their cameras, you know, their phone and that type of thing. They can hit that QR code and they can send it directly to our video system. And we have that evidence loaded up to the civilian to us to be able to review and put together a case type of thing. So you can do a lot of neat things with the system sales.
And Chris, when you talk to the um sales rep.
Yep.
Can you get, this is my request, pricing for sixteen and then twenty?
Sure.
So that we can look at. I mean, we're obviously talking the sixteen right now. Let's see what the differential is
Yeah.
Between the sixteen and the twenty.
Sure.
Cuz I think we're pretty much set on sixteen.
Yeah.
Going to animal control and crisis transport. So if you can get a price on sixteen and then twenty.
Absolutely.
So that we can make an informed decision whether which route we wanna go between sixteen and twenty.
When is that road patrol do uh, when's that melodub?
Two years.
Two years.
Question.
Pardon me?
I got a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
Forty four thousand dollars. We should see another bid in writing, okay?
Yep.
I don't wanna go a year down the road and somebody say, well, why didn't you get another bid? Well, because the sheriff talked to somebody and he said it was too much. That's not good enough.
We have another one coming.
Okay.
We'll get another one.
You did attempt, you said, and they didn't respond.
I I like the recommendations and everything else, but for for my job, I I gotta show the public that we checked out somebody else.
There's another one coming. We'll get you another one. Absolutely.
What's the law say? How long we have to store this stuff? Forever?
Uh, depends on the cases. Some are forever, some of them have years, you know, it's a homicide or something critical. So that's.
They got it on when they walk into the store to get a coke and nothing ever happened.
Thirty days.
How long? Thirty days?
It's gonna be a matter of whatever, thirty to ninety days, thirty to ninety days.
What's the law say?
Seven years. There's no.
It's not mandatory to have body cameras yet, but that's common.
But if you have video, how long do you have?
General.
I mean, no laws that you gotta have video. But if you do get video.
Well, I don't think there's any.
Is my question is, is it gonna fall through the state's records retention criteria? They know the state, you know, they've got that whole records retention schedule that says, you know, like inmate records are, you know, ninety nine years after the guy dies she dies, whatever, you know, and there's certain. And I don't know where video falls in that records retention schedule if it's even on there. Cuz the last time I knew, they hadn't updated that records retention schedule in eons.
I know there's a lot of different departments, they they hold them for a year.
Right.
Um, if they got the storage. But now you got this.
Cloud based, so.
But if if the normal stuff, you know, is a year. A case comes up in that year and at the end of the year, they dump.
What I'm suggesting is you might wanna look into it. Look into the records retention schedule and see if it specifically addresses these or not.
But yeah. City, so maybe it's gonna be just a matter of going back and looking.
Right.
You reach out to the sheriff's association and see what everybody else is doing as far as retention on that stuff. And then are there any insurance benefits to having?
There was discussion, there was.
Should be.
We approached them about that. We're not gonna, at this point, it wouldn't help with the purchase, but there will be some benefits.
Having uh GPS and and venue, I would think would have some you would hope.
With uh security in this in this building too, would would help and it didn't, but it's a means available question. We need to look into it. Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Thank you for the work and thank you for taking the initiative on this. I think this is extremely important on all levels.
Thank you.
More to come. Item C surplus property auction. Tim, you have.
List of about a dozen items that are ready to be uh put out for the auction. Would submit though that this list might change uh for two reasons. One, we've notified department heads if you have anything to add. I doubt that there'll be much, but you may see something added. Um, yesterday we um discovered uh I consider to be a serious problem with the pickup that uh Saudis are using. So we might pull one of these two Silverados with building and reassign that, but we're still, we're waiting on some uh
What happened?
Estimates. Well.
Did I not hear about this?
No, it just happened like after, after hours actually yesterday and, uh, a couple of our employees went out and noticed, uh. Odd color underneath the vehicle and, uh, well, I could show you the picture. Uh, turns out that our gas tank is actually roped onto the truck. Literally.
Which vehicles is?
Don't let us tell.
In the, yeah, small one.
Chris strikes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also.
I don't know. Okay.
You know, to me, that's a pretty serious safety problem. Your gas tank might fall off, probably not a good thing to have happen.
Safety roll.
Safety wire.
Was nylon, so like, no. Um, so anyway, well, I'm getting assessed been on that vehicle today and if it's not worth. I have to have no mechanical abilities whatsoever. So it might just be a bolt came loose or something. I don't know. But, um, that's, that's pretty significant. So it, that truck is, um. Smaller than the Silverados anyway. So, you know, we've got some thinking to do. It might be better just to swap them out. Uh, so you might see that change, but otherwise according to policy, we'll put together a resolution if you're so inclined for. Next week, uh, because the board has to approve any sale of surplus properties. Since our documentation.
So we're going to approve that possibly next week and then this stuff is, is up for auction?
Then it will go up for auction. Um, and. What thirty days, Mary? Is that about how long we do that?
Uh, usually two week rounds and then if something doesn't sell, I'll repost them another two weeks.
Okay, some of these things like the, uh, various office items that are used for a buck. If they don't sell, they may well end up with the local, uh, solid waste carrier. Where they need to go.
Tim, uh, last meeting. Uh, the veterans were here. They talked to me about, they were talking to me about the moving and all that jazz. They, they were looking for desks and office equipment. And I said, gee, we just scrapped a bunch of them. Cause they didn't sell. Oh man, so. If you want to reach out to these guys and ask them if they want to look at any of this stuff, I think we should give it to them.
And this is on the county website?
Not yet.
Um, it will be after you prove it. It will be a link to that.
Okay. So we can pass that out on our townships.
No, absolutely. I'll send you an email.
Do they have more description when they're on?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Anything else on that?
Is that van that's in there? Is that the old jail van that we're replacing? The one with four hundred thousand miles?
It's the one.
Three hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Oh, that's high of four hundred thousand. Why would we call four hundred?
But it, it runs, correct?
I mean, accurate statement when you start to talk.
It's around fantastic.
Three seventy-nine is a lot. Better than, right? Better than some of the cars we had last time.
All right.
We don't have any more cars to get rid of?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Well, on to the next fiscal year, twenty twenty-three proposed budget.
We had the meeting, um, in, in August where we reviewed that. There's not a great deal of change at all, uh, frankly, from that conversation. The one exception, I did, uh, have the opportunity to open the actuarial for the retirement. And I'm focused now on the DV plans and the plans that we are obligated for with our, our current retiree. And, um, in the category of too good to be true, our rates are actually lower, uh, for next year. Now, why is that? Well, one of the main criteria that's used by the actuary is to look at our rate of return versus what we projected. The projected rate of return was seven percent. The analysis only goes through the end of twenty-one. They nearly doubled that rate of return through twenty-one. So that impacts not only our rates, but also our. Uh, funding level jumps to seventy-seven percent. So great news for twenty-three, but when they do the actual area on next year, I've got a feeling that it's gonna go the other way and it's severe. Right now, the, the rates of return, you're doing good at minus fifteen percent. So I think next year we're gonna see a hit come on this, but for this year, for what MERS is gonna charge us. Factoring in all those variables, um, are actually gonna. See that number go down, uh, versus what we saw this year. But be prepared for twenty-four.
Now, we had some questions after the last, uh, budget meeting, uh, for district courts. You were gonna meet with the under sheriff for some of the overtime for the two officers. Um, is any of that conversation occurred?
We have actually extensive conversations about the overtime and where that stands. The proposals that are in front of you right now for twenty-three, I think are good, but the one exception, we were looking at the three oh one. Uh, with the two officers there, that number, we forget what we've come up with, but that'll be less. Number will be put down. Don't remember for district court.
We had some questions with, uh, tickets and, uh, remember they were gonna come and talk to us or you were gonna request that they did. Um, what was all that conversation about?
The O W I.
I didn't know it that much.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, we're still working on that.
We'll revisit that. I, you know, the trends. I'm pretty confident that we've got a good number in there, but yeah, we want to understand.
Wasn't there a significant, uh, uh, reduction in that number? We couldn't understand why.
Right, there was from, uh, a couple of years ago. Very last year, I think we had something in the neighborhood of five or six hundred thousand budgeted revenue there. Something coming in about two or three hundred thousand. Uh, I know that we attribute some of that to the, uh, trolls sitting on the freeway, not generating, but it's gotta be more than that.
We have night shift now. We have twenty-four hour coverage. I mean.
But I think looking at, uh, going too far backward, um, it was just a number that was plugged in a number of years ago and that we just kept it in there without ever any analysis. Now we're looking at these pretty closely. Five hundred thousand's an unrealistic number. Let's not plug it in that way. Let's reduce it now. So we know. Or at least are in better position at the end of the year. We're not in deficit somewhere. Guess we missed it. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I do, now that you mentioned it, recall that, sorry, Judge Daniel left you, but been a great person to have that conversation with. In terms of what that definition is for that category, what generates it. Yeah.
Nice to know.
Yeah.
You did that.
Yeah, cause they, they were gonna come. You were gonna invite them or at least have a one-on-one conversation with them.
We've had a number of other discussions with district court in the last few weeks that unfortunately that topic didn't come up, so.
Is it something you want to talk about?
Um, we just, I, I sent you the emails, uh, last week, I think it was about the way the vacation time was accrued.
Oh, yeah.
And we are really hip deep in. This person had these numbers, this person had those numbers. Uh, resolving all that and we're, we're extremely close. We're at least within a day or two on everybody. So we're getting there. I expect that might be resolved as early as tomorrow. Uh, we did, uh. Uh, come across a memo from Judge Noble that, um, really couldn't enact as our foundation number from a few years ago. Then it's just the arithmetic. How many vacation days did you take? How many did you earn? This was the base number. That's what we'll run with.
Is part of this confusion because things were being paper logs versus?
Yes. Two different systems. Uh, well, actually three. We, I knew of two systems. They were. Tracking their own at the district court and then we had our own, if you will, through payroll. Well, it turns out at district court, there were two people who were taking, keeping track of things and their numbers don't match. So this is why we're trying to now go back and figure out what is the base number. We know who took vacation days. We know when they were to be earned. So then it's just an arithmetic problem. So we're. Come up with that one memo. I think we're gonna be in good shape. No other argument to be had. Because they were set. Whenever that date is, and then we'll just do the math.
Shouldn't be any problems moving forward.
Oh.
It's in a system now. Tracy's.
That's what's really cool about this system is that we're finding these things and we can fix them. Uh, there are a couple of other little things that we discovered along the way that we were able to fix. It's just administrative issues, but this is the beauty of it. It's gonna be done. It's gonna be seamless. Probably. Six weeks from now, we should have all these things resolved. Moving forward, we've already been moved into now the maintenance mode. We're no longer building the system. So that was kind of a neat point. Hoping that would happen in July. It was mid-August when it did happen. Right, we're, we're good there.
We, do we anticipate them like? The, the group, the, the group of, uh. The union group of like district court, the next time around, uh, negotiations to ask to, to do it the, the way they've been doing it. We, do we anticipate that?
No, no, no.
Or they don't want us to go back to that?
You know, that, uh, it, it's been an evolution, you know, initially there was some resistance to it. But as we built the system, people begin to understand everything that's gone into it. They become more comfortable with it. And I think we're at a point, even though we have, uh, some disagreement on what the number should be, I think you do have agreement that this is gonna be wonderful once it's done.
It was a good meeting that we had with the court crew. It really was.
It was, and there've been several meetings since then, uh, some of them one-on-ones that have been equally positive. Uh, it's just a matter of coming to terms with what the number should be. And again, I'm hopeful with the discovery of the one memorandum. We've got a great start.
What meeting are you referring to?
And you, and you even had two different. We met with. Policy personnel or negotiations. We met with. Or the Teamsters Court Unit in regards to this vacation stuff.
Okay.
Um, and you actually had two different court groups that were figuring this different ways even. You had front of the court doing it one way. You had district court doing it a different way. So it was very enlightening.
Then we had the contract that said, no, you're supposed to do it this.
Exactly. So.
Right. They were doing differently than the contract and they've been doing it differently over many contracts. So when they come into contract talks, they're just reading how it should be done and saying, oh yeah, okay. I agree with that.
But they didn't, they weren't doing it that way.
They were doing it.
So that's what brought this, this.
Let's say.
This payroll system brought this whole thing to light, which was good.
Yeah.
It was excellent. I guess I, I read the email. I guess I didn't realize that there was a, a actual meeting.
Everything we.
I thought it was you and them. I didn't realize that you guys were pulling from negotiations.
Mark went to it. I was absent to that meeting.
Having a meeting like that heads off grievances and all sorts of headaches later on.
Makes sense.
But, uh, we had people at the other side of the table who were just as confused as we were.
Okay, yeah.
So it, it was really good just to have the conversation. It's, it's cordial. And I think that's helped just in terms of. The, the, the union personnel willingness to come to me and say, okay, what about this? Instead of having something imposed and then grievances filed and everything else. That's the kind of relationship I think we want. Here we had the foundation built from that meeting, working wonderfully. Just gotta get through it.
Communication.
Yeah.
Um. The, uh, make sure we put up for the next one. It's not on this committee of the whole, but the, uh. Oh gosh, out there on, uh, Rock River Trail, the property.
High Banks.
High Banks. Yeah, make sure we put that on. So that's continuing to be talked about.
So.
If there's been any more discussion, but we can just put it up for the next committee of the whole. Okay?
Did you want to, for the next tomato hole bridge, do you want to have the? Phila Dreams property discussion or? I'd, I'd like to go to. Or you go to. Township and, uh, township. Okay, the, the whole board is, um, interested in something. Okay.
But that'll give you adequate time. If we put it on the next committee of the whole, it's two weeks. You'll have a meeting by then, won't you?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put it on there. That way we're, it's not forgotten.
Next township, next Wednesday. Uh, no, it's the second. Second Wednesday? Second Wednesday.
At least put it on there so it's not dropped.
So yeah, you're right. It, no, it'll be. It'll be, it would be the day before the board meeting. So. We should have time to. Oh, we can, we can stop down there and talk to them too.
Yeah.
Let's do public comment before. Is there anything else, anything that's, anything else you guys want to talk about?
GPS. This is another can that's been kicked down the road. Like you said, let's get something going.
Yeah, they mentioned it. They are working on it.
Nine ones, nine one ones.
I'm working with the Iosco County. I, I think I told him that's already sold. With new CAD system, what's that?
Good thing you told us.
How, with the new CAD system. The, I reached out to Iosco County about the car. They've already got it set up. It's in state cars. It's in Iosco County's car. And. I asked them about doing other vehicles. They said, no. We will be willing to do your patrol cars, but not your other vehicles. So what you said about all county cars, we're gonna have to look into something else for the other cars. But dispatch didn't want transit buses on their screen. Along with the ambulances and everything else. They don't need to go with all the consulting.
No, that's fine.
But I, I just sent an email to the Iosco County Director. We're working on getting the interface for our patrol car laptops to interface with dispatch. Yeah, so it, it's coming.
So is there something through BSNA we could do to rest of the vehicles, but?
Not through BSNA. We'd have to reach out to another vendor. Ray's already got GPS in his buses. So we could maybe reach out to that vendor. Or our other vehicles. We're, we could see it. Um. I, I am, I told him, let's get the bugs worked out of the CAD system. Let's say our patrol cars and let's work out the rest of the vehicles.
And it's not just the GPS, but it's the, having these vehicles entered into an asset management program so that we can track every asset of that vehicle.
That we have.
How many sets of tires are put on it? How many times it was in for an oil change? When it's due for an oil change? All these things we can track to know what the depreciation, how long a vehicle lasts, we can better, better prepare for our budgets. Because we know how long our assets are gonna last.
We just got the fixed asset mod only three weeks ago and Paul's got access to it now. We're in the process of, I call it. Um, here you put in the assets that came from the author. Um, I guess I reached out to them to give that a little bit of some business in the works.
There's a whole service record that you can add service history in for each vehicle. So as a, if it was in for an oil change, if you didn't need tires, there was an accident like. And all those repairs, like there's all the history, the invoice that came in with it, how much it costs. And then, like you can run graphs and see like depreciation.
Awesome.
And you can put it printout when we do an auction, you can see the service record for that vehicle too.
Absolutely.
Be more confident that you're bidding on a good vehicle.
So it's there. It's in place. Now it's just starting to utilize it.
All right, it's a gas pedal school.
Three weeks ago, so.
It's in place. That's, that's what I want.
As a GPS, if, if Ray has a system in, let's see about adding building. Build, building and all that, all the other vehicles after that.
As you remember, the cautionary tale of that is those are federal dollars. So we're gonna make sure we're not violating any federal.
Sure.
Thing, but yeah.
But let's take a look at.
We can work that out. We, we've talked about that even with the repairs in the past and how we can do this.
But I mean, you know, I'm familiar with the GPS and where it saves and how we can look back. And see where they've been. Um. We can patrol cars go if I ask them to take them on. Then let's do that until, until we can get them taken on.
Yes.
The sheriff's. They, they host the CAD system for three counties now. So that's why we're doing.
Oh, well, don't you thought what an idea like that.
Well, that's what a dispatch, that's what, um. She said when she was in here, she was communicating with the new software for, uh. Oh gosh, what's her name?
Yes.
Yes. I was in here and she said she's in conversation. She's in conversation with Iosco County and Airneck.
Right.
Is that?
Yeah, the, the new CAD system that's hosted in Iosco County, Airneck, all of them are sharing the service with them.
I think it, I think it'd be very beneficial, you know, at the next mileage, um, for the taxpayers to know. What the benefits are to road patrol and, and where they patrol and how often they patrol and that. That, um, show down that, yes, this is important, you know.
Totally agree.
Your area is.
That's just my opinion. I'm not trying to promote a mileage. Um, but I think it's.
It will help.
Definitely, definitely, um, important for us to.
It would definitely help.
Just one more comment on the, on the budget. Timing being what it is and publication deadlines, um, I do intend to shoot the public hearing notice to the paper. Probably today, just to make sure that it gets published in the timeframe it's supposed to be, uh, with the uniform budgeting and accounting act. Uh, so right now our calendar has us scheduled to have that hearing on the twenty-second. So not the next regular meeting, but the one after that. Uh, bear in mind that public hearing, you do not have to adopt the budget at that meeting if you don't want to, but we still are obligated to have the hearing. So I don't think there's any harm in putting the notice in the paper now to do that. Uh, we will also have, uh, in the notice, uh, link. So if any of the public want to go in and look at the budget, they'll be able to do that through our webpage.
But there isn't another meeting. There is another meeting in the month. After that one.
Right, but you do have the opportunity to meet on the twenty-ninth if you want to, uh, for a special meeting if you think it's necessary.
To adopt it.
To adopt.
Don't adopt it on twenty-second.
Right.
So do you guys want to have another meeting, a special meeting like we did, just did? To further discuss the budget before the twenty-second?
Over here. Well, the fifteenth, the fifteenth will be the next committee of the whole meeting. If we're gonna discuss it any more than that, we should do it then and then adopt it on the twenty-second.
So the fifteenth.
Plan to adopt it on.
The fifteenth is the next committee of the whole and that's a five-thirty meeting.
Yes.
So, uh, there's, I don't. There's no deadline. There's no timeframe to that meeting. So there definitely be more time to discuss at that meeting.
Right, but the budget deadline is the thirty.
Correct.
Without a doubt.
So, but what Tim's saying is on the twenty-second, if it doesn't get adopted, we have the following week. We, we still have the following week to have a special meeting. We have nothing that final week because there's five. There's five Thursdays in September. So if need be, we have that final week to have a special meeting.
And I don't anticipate any surprises.
Do we have a public hearing on the fifteenth? It's committee hall. Well, I understand, but public hearing is outside of the, you could.
Oh, you could.
I think at five o'clock or before our meeting. Five fifteen, whatever.
Scheduled for five sixty.
I think you schedule it for five thirty. I just don't think there's gonna be that. I don't think we're gonna get a plus for the people.
Does that give you adequate time to get it in the paper? I guess that gives you to, to get it in the paper, get it published.
Should. I'm more concerned about the timeframe that's stated in the statute. It has to be. Published so many days or not less than certain number of days ahead of the meeting, but I'm pretty confident, uh. That we would still be okay if we didn't on the fifteenth, but I'll have to dig into the statute to confirm and take a look at it because.
You. If you don't adopt it on twenty-second, you want to go one week. That's all you got.
Right.
That's it. I mean, you gotta make up your mind.[1783.11] Uh, if there's something that you want to dive into, takes more than a week, bad, it's not gonna be found. If it isn't found, it's not gonna be found at that. Because you have to adopt. If, if the public hearings takes off on the fifteenth, if there's something more you didn't look into, you have two more whole weeks to do it.
I don't foresee there being.
I don't foresee you having a whole lot of people coming in. I, I've experienced five budget hearings now, you know, they're open and closed in three minutes.
So do you guys want to do it at five-thirty on the fifteenth? Before the.
Works for me.
Are you okay with that?
If we're completed and we're ready to go.
Within the statutory publishing timeframe, fifteenth is good.
I request for, um, next week, if it's possible. I'm gonna be out of town on the seventh and eighth for an inventory. Is there any way we can meet at five-thirty? Nine AM next week. Up you guys.
I can.
I'm good going all day, aren't you?
I'm going for eight days.
You're going on the eighth anyway.
I leave the twelfth.
Oh, the twelve.
Yeah.
That's next Thursday.
Yeah, I don't leave until.
You're asking for a five-thirty meeting at?
I believe I can make it here by then.
You believe or you're sure?
I believe. I don't know how long an inventory is gonna finish, so, um, normally we're pretty close to being done by five o'clock. So it takes me about twenty minutes to get here from a boat like, so.
I don't have problems.
I am perfectly fine with five-thirty. Thank you. Allowing my input.
He does like mornings anyway, so.
I can't win.
He doesn't have to get out of bed.
I am not a morning person. Thank you.
Never have.
So five-thirty next Thursday. Okay, and then on the fifteenth, we're gonna have, uh, uh, we're gonna have the public hearing. At five-thirty. Okay, so why don't we move?
As long as we meet the statutory requirement for publication.
Yeah, why don't we move this administrative performance review a close session after public comment? So will we have public comment? Item five, is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment? I see one of our soon-to-be commissioners is here. Welcome, Mr. Wiltzy. Any, any public comment on the phone? No public comment. We have administrator's performance review a close session. Can I have a motion to go into a close session?
I'll make a motion to go into a close session.
And there'll be no, no, uh, business after close session, correct?
Uh, one question, Tim. Mr. Wiltzy be allowed in our close session?
I'm okay with it if you are. It's really, um.
The motion they, they made.
You can just allow it.
If you'd like to stay, this is related to, this is, this is related to the, uh, the administrative performance review of our administrator. There's, there's, we're trying to expand it, trying to discuss it.
If you wanna, if you wanna sit.
We have a motion. Can we have? Kind of over. So we have a, a motion with Commissioner Newbecker support from Commissioner Serb. Do you want a close session? We get a roll call vote?
Mark Serb.
Yes.
Brad Vaughn.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Danny David.
Yes, we are wanting a session at ten open.
Say, can we have a?
I haven't even asked for that before. Go ahead, guys.
He's going, so. It's the power of suggestion, Jay.
I have absolutely no control today.
Some person's gone. Go ahead.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Enter back into open.
Oh, I thought we did. We have a motion to go into open session.
And make a motion to go into open session.
We have a motion, Commissioner Serb with support, Commissioner Newbecker to go into open session, roll call vote.
Newbecker.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion with support to adjourn at ten-thirty.